Our Borough Council Voting Session for our July 20, 2022 meeting. And next item is the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to be led by Ms. Vaccaro. Okay, before we get on to item three, just one housekeeping item, I'm going to pull off item K under our consent agenda and make that under discussion. So we'll discuss that before we get to the consent agenda. Okay. Okay, item three is comment suggestions petitions by residents and tenants regarding items that are not on the agenda. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item four, comments by the Borough Council and Mayor, and we'll start with Mr. McCoy.
First of all, I'd just like to say, appreciate Chief Morehead, he's here. He gave us a tour and some training at the Public Safety Training Facility in Coatesville, and it was terrific. And I can only say that only makes me prouder of our force here and the training that they get and the fact that, you know, we don't ever have to worry about what happened in Uvalde happened here because of that. So, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Ms. Vaccaro?
I was also at the training with Chief Morehead, and I found it extremely enlightening. Thank you so much for taking the time to show us. The training facility is phenomenal. It's an absolutely beautiful building. I focus on that side of it rather than the more frightening parts, but it was very enlightening. I appreciated being there. I also wanted to thank the Bid and Parks and Rec for all of the effort they have put into all the music and all the activities that are going on in our borough this summer. It's been wonderful. I want to continue seeing it grow. It's been amazing. Thank you for everything.
Thank you. Mr. McGinnis?
Thank you, and I want to echo the same comments here as Councilwoman Vaccaro and McCoy. Thank you, Chief, for that tour. It was very informative, and thank you for all the work that you do and the Westchester Police Department in keeping us safe. I truly believe that they are the best police department in all of Chester County. Thank you.
Mr. Flynn?
Chief Morehead, my wife wants to know what were you thinking inviting me to a place where there's weapons? I'm from Darby, the garden spot of Delaware County. Greetings from the sweetest ward in the borough, the sixth ward. I only have two things I want to remind people of. Please, please look in on your elderly neighbors the next week or so. It's really unbearable outside. And if you don't see them, knock on their door. Make them get up, because a lot of old people put fans on in the wrong direction and turn their houses into ovens. So if you see one of your neighbors, just, you know, take a bottle of water over to them, bang on the door and say, hey, just checking on you, make sure you're safe. And also make sure that any of the neighbor's dogs or pets are not left out in this kind of weather. And stay safe.
Thank you. Mr. Allen?
Yeah, definitely missed out on a good time. I wasn't able to make it to the police training this time, but, um, sounds like it was great. But yeah, I just wanted to say, you know, stay safe and try to stay cool as you can this week. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Dorsey?
Thanks, Mr. Stefano. Just wanted to remind folks of the National Night Out on August 2nd at Henderson at 6:00 PM. Chief Morehead and the police force will be there and EMTs. We heard a little bit about that earlier at the public safety meeting, but just want to invite everyone in the community to come out and meet those who serve us. And I also wanted to acknowledge the opening of the Pickney Hill Commons over on Minor Street at the Melton Center. It is the first affordable housing complex here in Westchester. Want to thank the borough for their support there. That was before I was a part of Borough Council, the county, PHFA, of course, the Melton Center Board, and residents that have supported that. We've got residents moving in, and there will be a ribbon-cutting ceremony on September 7th. Hope to see you there. Thanks.
Thank you. Mary Dia-Baptiste?
Thank you, President Stefano. I think I just want to echo the sentiments. I hope that, I don't know if any of you saw the video that's coming out of Uvalde, Texas. It's truly heartbreaking. So if you're praying, if you're a praying person, I would suggest that you send up prayers for those families in that town in Texas. And I am happy, like, to echo the sentiments of other council people to say that the training that the Westchester Police go through is bar none. It's excellent, and, you know, having the opportunity to go over there to the training center myself, it makes you think twice about what you would do in similar circumstances. And so that's when training has to take over. You have to be trained, trained, trained. And clearly, if you watch the video, you could see that did not take place. So keep all of those families and this country in your prayers. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Yeah, congratulations to the Mountain Sutter Board and the Pickney Commons Apartments. That's really amazing. I feel like that happened, I feel like it snuck up on us and it was done really quickly. So it looks great. It's an amazing addition. And the fact that it's the only affordable housing in the borough is pretty incredible and part of our strategic planning and comprehensive plan that we have here. So that's really great, and congratulations to them. I reiterate what Mr. Flynn said about looking on your neighbors. I've listened to some podcasts over the summer, and there's definitely heat kills, right? So we know that, and I think it doesn't get the attention that some of the other natural disasters do. But just look out for your neighbors, make sure everybody is safe, and if you can lend a hand, please do that. Lastly, yes, I'll be attending the training tomorrow, just like some of the other council people. I'm excited. Me and Mr. Flynn are going to go, and I'm absolutely intrigued to see how this works. I did see some of those videos from the Uvalde shooting, and as a school teacher specifically, it's terrifying. And, you know, I'm really interested to see the way our officers are trained. And I keep hearing sentiments from different parts of the country about putting guns in teachers' hands, and we are not trained for that, and I don't think we need any more training to deal with that. It's not our responsibility. So I'm really looking forward to getting a little bit more of a view of that tomorrow afternoon. So, that's it. Thank you, everybody. Moving on. So, we're moving on to item K, which we pulled off of the consent agenda, which is approved resolution enabling the Railroad Restoration Committee to provide rail service via the metro concept between Westchester and Wawa, Delaware County, with the inclusion of language that supports coexistence with the Westchester Railroad. This was pulled off just because we had some concerns in making sure that this is actually going to meet the needs of everybody involved. I thought it would be worth pulling it out one more time to just kind of discuss it amongst us. I looked at the language, the new language put in there. I think it does keep it in mind that we need both of these entities to coexist, and it is a goal, and we're going to do every effort we can to make sure that both of those entities are represented and continue. I will remind everybody on council that, once again, this is a resolution supporting the idea and supporting the Railroad Restoration Committee to pursue this. It is not approving it, if that makes sense. But I will first open this up to any comments or questions from council up here.
So, I'll go, Mr. Stefano. I had some concerns that we heard some things last night for the first time from the Historic Railroad that had not previously been shared with council. And given that the resolution was on, you know, on our desks for approval, there was an amendment to the resolution. I'm not sure that it clearly addressed the collaboration between the two organizations. And therefore, you know, I'd like us to do a little more due diligence before we pass the resolution. I think that the fact that we have a commission, a railroad commission, or restore the railroad commission says that we support that initiative. But given the information that came to light last night, I would just like to see that we take a pause and do some due diligence.
Mr. Stefano, I agree with Councilwoman Dorsey. I would like to table this resolution.
Okay. No, I haven't heard a second. I think you need to be seconded to actually table it. My only thoughts on this is the timeliness of this in terms of there are meetings happening, the rail restoration committee is beginning to talk to people as they've been doing, and for them to have this and say, hey, look, council supports us fully. They want us to look at this. They want us to do that. To have that at those meetings would be a big boost, as opposed to them going, oh, well, they're going to support it, I promise, but we haven't done it yet. So that's my only concern with taking some more time on this. I don't think it would 100% to use the derail it, but I don't think it would derail it. But that would be my only push to try and get it done. Thoughts over here?
Yeah, Mr. Stefano, I'm in agreement with you. I mean, this is merely to support the idea to continue it. The details and the actual execution of it will be the time to iron out some of those details.
I'm in agreement as well. This came before my committee. And again, this is just a resolution for support. It's not an ordinance. It's not anything else. It's just a resolution for support, and I encourage everyone to support that ordinance and that we can move forward.
Yeah, I appreciate the comments by Mrs. Keats and your committee yesterday. I think that we do need to take a pause. I think we do need to fully flesh out what they're saying. I understand the desire of the commission to work with them and try to make it happen. But this is a group that have volunteered for, I think you said, 13, 15 years, 25 years in the borough. They have been volunteering for 25 years. That ought to account for something. They bring tourists to our town, and I would hate to get to the 11th hour, which, you know, it feels almost like we're there, but we're not, and us talk about, oh, we miss the tourist attraction, we miss the trains, and, you know, the old-fashioned nature of the trains, and have the town and everyone else say, where did they go? What happened? And they get pushed to the side after 25 years. I think we really need to, it doesn't hurt, it doesn't slow up the process of what the commission is doing. It simply allows them to work together to figure out how they can coexist, because I don't think we want to leave what we do know to something that we don't for a group that has brought us tourists and revenue to this borough.
Comments up here before I go public, or? Okay. Any public comments? Come on down.
Join Kelton Railroad Commission. We have, every time that we bring slide presentations in and supporting documentation, it shows the coexistence of both railroads. We have worked for that since 2014. It's on every single slide that we bring here. It never shows the Heritage Railroad shoved off to the side. They have the main track coming into the platform, and then the track and ramping that we would propose to lease would come up next to the historic railroad, and they would have their own boarding platforms. The car barn is in a separate location. All of the expanded parking would benefit the railroad. The landscaping would benefit the railroad. That site has not had a good cleaning out in a very long time. The Heritage Railroad would have liked to have had help with the trees removal and trimming for decades, and we actually help garden to keep the landscaping pretty neat, as much as volunteers can do. So we do everything we can, including paying dues as members, and coordinate with the Heritage Association. And when we meet with SEPTA, we reiterate, and as I mentioned last night, I took a model lease to SEPTA last time we were there, showing them how the two could coexist. It's done in Texas, and it can be done here as well. So, in terms of the comment about it wouldn't hurt to take a pause, I just need direction, because I have different meetings set up, including the commissioners on July 26, the Director of Operations from Chaney University on July 27. He's very excited to hear about our plans to expand the parking at Chaney. And after we meet with the commissioners, or when we meet with commissioners, I wanted to ask them if they would reach out to Delco, council themselves. If not, then I will certainly do it. But I think it would be more influential if the commissioners actually reached out to council themselves. But I don't know what they're going to want to do. So, and in addition, if you recall, back in January, we submitted a line item request with RCAP, with the state budget, to get money in the budget for essentially seed money, and that was about $4 million. That's about 20% of the total cost of the 16.4 million. That was put into the budget when the budget was signed. So, the period to submit the actual application begins, I believe it's January 25, and the window closes in August. So, if we don't do that now, we're going to miss that opportunity. And then there's another federal application that we could use the state money as seed money, as matching money, that comes up in October. And then there are other applications in 2023. So, if we should cancel these meetings and not submit the applications, I just need to know that from council. The other thing is, I did bring some suggested language for this resolution that I would like council to review, whether or not you table the resolution, because I think this protects the borough more than this actual language does. And if you could just look on the third paragraph, it says, whereas the metro concept would use a rail line currently leased and used by the Westchester Railroad and maintained by the Westchester Heritage Association, that's incorrect as written, it should say, the metro concept would use a SEPTA-owned rail line. So SEPTA is the owner, no one else, and currently leased. It's leased by the borough. And the railroad heritage association is a sub less C. So that's why, you know, it would be helpful for the borough to say, you want to protect the rights of the Heritage Association, but you don't control that yourself, because you don't own it. So if SEPTA wanted to say, well, we're going to do the 380 million that PennDOT proposed, then they would shut us down, our project down, and they would have to shut down the Heritage Association, because there's nowhere on the SEPTA regional rail line that they have this kind of operation. But because we're doing our own separate metro concept, we can fit it in and make it work. So I would ask you to consider those changes. Use a SEPTA-owned rail line currently leased by the borough and used by the Westchester Railroad. And then the last paragraph is fine, because you're saying you want to make sure that the Heritage Association is not adversely impacted. So that's the most you can do. You can't say that, you know, nobody can force them to leave, because that's up to SEPTA ultimately, as the owner.
Understood. Thank you.
All righty, thanks.
So, Ms. Kelton?
Yeah.
So, it almost sounds to me like there is a working plan in progress. Is that true? From what you're saying, they can coexist along with you there? So there is, in fact, a working plan in progress?
Absolutely. Every time we bring the slides in, and it's part of that.
That you can coexist?
Yes, that's part of that.
Because even when I heard Mr. Hickey last night, I didn't hear that you were going to work toward a working plan. I didn't hear there was an actual working plan.
No, we have a working plan. It's not an approved plan. It's still a work in progress. So while we're trying to find money to fund all of this, we're working on the details of the plan. And the working plan has always included coexistence. And that has to do with the car barn being in a separate location. All of our plans are on SEPTA property, including expanding and retrofitting the Market Street Station. We want to expand the Neale Street Station. Maybe you saw that last night?
Can I stop here? Can I clarify your question, Ms. Mayor? You're asking, do they have a working plan, as in the plan that we saw, like the big presentation with the PowerPoint? What's your, I'm confused what you're asking.
No, my question, and I think you understood it.
Yeah.
My question was, you have a working plan in progress for the Westchester Railroad to coexist with the new electric trains, correct?
Yes, yes.
So you have a working plan in progress, because I didn't hear that from Mr. Hickey last night. He was saying that we want to work with them. We really, you know, that he, he was saying how important it was, but it didn't seem like there was a plan. But what I'm hearing from you today is that there is, in fact, a plan in progress so that you both can coexist. And then I guess my only other question is, to your point, SEPTA owns the railroad, so they can kick you out and the Westchester Railroad out at any point in time. So why is it important that you have our quote-unquote passive blessing?
Oh, well, it's important for two reasons. One, all of the entities that we're looking for want to know that, because we're just an ad hoc committee. So we speak for you, and we want to be able to say that Borough Council is behind our plan and our applications. In fact, that's what the applications say. The Borough Manager signs off on the funding applications. The other thing is, there's a certain comfort level. The other thing is, there's a certain comfort level when we can say the borough understands our plan, they've seen it all, they understand that we're going to be looking for money, we're going to be looking for matching money from different places. In fact, one of the things I'm hoping is, when I meet with the Director of Operations at Chaney, turns out there is some HBSC money that we might be able to tap into to help with the parking expansion at Chaney. So there are all different funding applications that, when we go to these different entities and say, would you help us out by helping us get this money, we can say, we're speaking for the borough. And we want to issue a press release, you know, I want to send it to the transportation reporter at the Inquirer, so that gets us more publicity.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Are there other comments?
Hi. I think from last night, everybody knows who I am at this point. A couple things.
Can you still just say it for the, you're on some public meetings or something?
Okay, Beth Keats, Westchester Railroad. First of all, if there's any request for grants for the property that is owned by SEPTA, leased to the Westchester borough, we respectfully request actually to be known ahead of time about that and get a full copy of that. I've requested that a couple of times and have not been fully given a full copy of it before the grant was made, partially on our behalf.
I'm sorry, can I just, just to be, for clarity and for conciseness, are these things you're asking to be added to this resolution?
What we would want to make, the main thing that we want to make sure that is added and inclusive in this resolution specifically, is you just added in SEPTA-owned. That's incredibly important, because this has been owned by SEPTA and is their property. So yeah, you're absolutely correct. They can come in at any time. The lease as it is, says they can come in at any time and kick everybody off.
Okay, okay.
So that's incredibly important, because no consideration in any way, shape, or form can ever be made without asking SEPTA first. Railroad Avenue couldn't have been changed without that. We also express concerns to make sure that any impact to our operations and facilities is made known to us before that actually happens. So there's been lots of plans and changes and adjustments to these plans over the past year or so, and it's imperative that we're involved in all of the discussions regarding that. I know we've worked to make sure that they have the information that we can provide, but we need to share back and forth in a much more amicable manner that has been done in the past couple of months.
So, could that be, you would like something kind of language in this resolution saying something more specific in terms of your...
Something more specific in terms of what they can and cannot do with our property, be it ever to happen in the future.
With SEPTA's property? You were very clear about that.
Yes, probably.
All right, we're getting, all right.
Exactly.
Ms. Keats, would it be satisfactory if it said, "in collaboration with the Westchester Railroad"? Because, you know, I'm concerned about putting, you know, copies of grants, updates to, in the resolution, updates to plans, et cetera. But I do think, and what we heard last night is that you are asking for collaboration and transparency, which is not something, and correct me if I'm wrong, that we heard last night.
Collaboration is incredibly important. Transparency is incredibly important. I'll grant you that. But I don't know that we've had, or you have all been given, full transparency and collaboration from the ad hoc committee of the restoration of rails. And I think everybody here in front of me today needs to make sure that they get the full story, all of the information, other than just what's in the notes. There's been a lot of comments back and forth, good, bad, or indifferent, and I don't feel that right now is a good time for this resolution to be passed.
So what we heard last night, history behind us, going forward, we want to look forward, right? And how we can accommodate both what the railroad commission is trying to achieve, as well as maintaining the historic railroad, right? Going forward, again, I'll say, you know, would collaboration and transparency added to the resolution meet what you're requesting?
I would need to discuss that directly with the railroad owners.
I think the concern...
If somebody wants to draft that, so that that can be...
She's trying to help you out. She's trying to help you out here.
I understand, but I can't specifically answer that question without going to the gentleman that is, on the bottom line is the lease. It's his lease.
It sounds like you all need a seat at the table to be involved in the decision-making.
Yeah. Put us on the board, or somebody, directly from operations or the management of the Westchester.
I still find it, I still find, I still don't see how this resolution is not helping you, or is essentially not putting you at the table. I don't think there's any language in here that says that excludes you from the conversation or from the process. I think adding collaboration and transparency would be a little more specific and explicit, you know, making sure they are a part of the process, and I'm happy to add that in there. But I don't see anything in this that precludes you from being part of the process, as far as I know.
Yeah, I would agree. I think what's missing, again, is the requirement that they are at the table, right? So if we can update the resolution to reflect that, I, you know, would be willing to move this forward, otherwise suggesting that it's tabled tonight.
Mr. Gore, if we were to add in that kind of language, is that something that we could get done tonight, or is that something that we have to?
I would feel more comfortable if we actually had the language and we can review it, and then we can come back and all Borough Council can ensure that it's a language that everybody has agreed upon.
Okay.
Any other questions?
No, thank you. Thank you. Ms. Kelton?
Controlling owner of the railroad is not the Railroad Heritage Association, the members that are here tonight. It's Joe, I've forgotten his last name. Sorry. He has never come to our meetings, and we invite him all the time. We've called him on the phone, we email him. We finally went to him and said, name a place, time, and location. Tom and I went there.
Who is he? I'm sorry, who's this?
The president of the Forest State Railroad. He owns...
Okay, okay.
Everything.
Okay.
Locks, passenger seats, you name it. Everything that's out there, he individually owns. It's his.
Okay.
It's his money that goes into the... It's his money that goes into the running of the railroad, besides passenger tickets. So we, we have not been able to collaborate with him at all. And so we do have a couple of members from the Heritage Association that attend our meetings, and they're always on my emails, and they get our agenda. And so we have collaboration and transparency, and they get all of our plans. So there isn't anything here that council has not seen, but we have not been able to have any kind of collaboration with the owner. Maybe that's something that could be achieved by council, I don't know, because I believe Borough Manager will be, if he has not already begun discussions with him to renegotiate the lease with SEPTA. So there's going to be some contact there.
Okay.
But we, but I just want to let everybody know, there isn't anything that you haven't seen.
So Ms. Kelton, just to clarify, you would not have any concerns with the update to the resolution to include collaboration and transparency as well as the updates to SEPTA that you and Ms. Keats recommended?
My, my only concern there is the word collaboration, because as I mentioned, we have never been able to talk to the owner, and if that holds us up from doing things, which it shouldn't, because the real power is with SEPTA and the borough, that's what makes me a little leery about including that. Transparency is great. I mean, we do that whenever we can, but collaboration, we haven't been able to achieve.
I would argue if someone from the railroad is at the table, they would be the spokesperson for.
It's not the same entity as the owner.
Or, okay, is that the heritage?
No, the owner is Joe Giacchino.
Yep.
It's a, it's a private individual doing businesses for states. It's a complicated picture.
Okay. It's getting muddy now. We're getting muddy. We're getting down in it. Um, come on, come on up. Come on up. I'm about to have a meeting with all these people.
Thought this was simple, right, Michael? Sure. So, first of all, Joe Giacchino and Skip Small are the two owners of, the remaining owners of Four States Railroad. You need me to spell his last name? Are you good? C.C.H.I.N.O. And I helped facilitate a meeting between Ms. Kelton and Mr. Hickey, Joe and Skip. They both are very busy individuals. Not only are they running a railroad, but they also have jobs, families, and everything in between. They have been involved in meetings with the borough for years, and certainly have been, were actively involved in the very beginnings meetings of the Restore the Rails to Westchester Committee meetings. They are more than willing to, and have spoken to Ms. Kelton and Mr. Hickey on multiple occasions, as has I, and we want to make sure that the correct entities are thoroughly involved. Larry and I have been appointed by Joe Giacchino, Skip Small, to act on behalf of them. That's why we're here. Tyler Haney, and as our president of the Westchester Railroad Heritage Association, which is a separate entity from the Westchester Railroad, is specifically with the Heritage Association. That helps clarify that in any way, shape, or form. And Joe and Skip do not own all of the equipment. The Heritage Association also owns some of it. There's not an equal split, but there's, it doesn't really matter right now. But I want to make sure that that stands for the record.
Okay.
That one person does not own everything.
Okay.
Mr. Stefano, I'd like, I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion that the resolution is updated to reflect collaboration and transparency between the two entities, as well as the ownership of SEPTA.
If we update that, Mr. Gore, even if we can't get it written tonight, is it okay? Would we be able to vote on that with that being a direction to add to the resolution?
I, I second that motion.
Okay.
Association.
Okay.
If I may.
Yeah.
Ms. Kelton also had some amendments to the one whereas statement.
Yes, and.
Third paragraph would use a SEPTA-owned rail line.
Just to add in that it's SEPTA-owned and language into there.
Leased by the borough and used by the Westchester Railroad.
Okay, Ms. Dorsey, with that motion, would you be okay adding that to your motion?
Yes.
And Mr. McGinnis, would you be okay if we, as a secondary on that?
Absolutely.
Okay. Does that make sense? You got that, Mr. Gore?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so there's been a motion and a second to add that language in those two spots on the table. Mr. Gore, do we have to vote on that specifically before we vote on the actual resolution, or is this actually voting on the resolution? Comment first? Okay, all right, so let's have comment first on that. Anybody up here first, comment?
I, now I have a question.
Yes.
We're changing words around, I apologize.
Yeah, I know, it's a little.
What's happened now in the third paragraph, it's putting all the onus on the Westchester Railroad to maintain the tracks. But it says, the use of the rail line and the Westchester Railroad maintain the Westchester, you know, to me, it's, they have to agree to maintain the rails.
Well, I mean.
They're owned by SEPTA.
I think you're just saying, you're not saying they have to, you're saying that they do at this point, correct? Is that?
Used by Westchester and maintained by.
Yeah.
But maintained is the current tense.
They currently maintain it.
Okay.
Yeah.
So they can stop maintaining it.
SEPTA-owned, so I guess they.
And they'll probably use.
Come on up, just say your name real quick and give us a.
Sorry, under the terms of the lease between, between the borough with Four States Railroad service doing business as Westchester Railroad, the terms are that the Westchester Railroad is responsible for all maintenance, SEPTA is not responsible for any maintenance on the line.
That makes sense, Mr. Flynn? Okay. Thank you for clarifying, I appreciate that. Was it Tyler?
Yes.
Thank you, Tyler. Thank you. Was there any other questions? That's good. Other comments or questions? All right, you got any further?
The work project, sorry, sorry. The slides that we always bring up includes the fact that the project, the 16.4 million, would include maintenance. So money from the funding that we would obtain would pay for the maintenance.
Okay.
So, but now it's correct that.
Yeah.
The volunteers have to do it.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other comments on this? All right. All right, good. Now we're good. Comments and questions are over. Mr. Gore, we have a motion and a second. Would you please call the question?
Mr. Flynn.
Yes.
Ms. Vaccaro.
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis.
Yes.
Mr. Allen.
Yes.
Mr. McCoy.
Yes.
Ms. Dorsey.
Yes.
Mr. Stefano.
Yes. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you. All right, moves on to item five, which is our consent agenda, minus item K, which we just voted on separately. Any questions or comments about that?
I like the move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve the consent agenda, minus item K. And further comment? All right, Mr. Gore, would you call the question, please?
Mr. Flynn.
Yes.
Ms. Vaccaro.
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis.
Yes.
Mr. Allen.
Yes.
Mr. McCoy.
Yes.
Ms. Dorsey.
Yes.
Mr. Stefano.
Yes, motion carries seven zero. Item six is other business. Is there any other business? I guess I'll just do one more reminder that there are openings in the library, board, and the planning commission, if anybody's interested. Okay, no other business? Or do you have something else? Oh, yes, and then that Borough Council, we're going to meet after this meeting in executive session to discuss legal matters. Okay, thank you.